Mr. Panzeroff. Here. Mr. Powell. Howard. And Mr. View.
Present.
Mrs. Salin.
Present.
Mr. Simeon.
Here.
Mr. Weinstein. Here. Mrs. Zajic.
Here.
Mrs. Goldberg.
Yes.
And Mr. Richelieu is here. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on the proposed budget?
Some of them second.
All favor.
Aye.
So, the public hearing includes several parts. It will include a presentation by Mrs. Sugars, by Mr. Green. There is the budget itself, and there's also a travel and related expense reimbursement portion to this, and there will be public comment taken during this hearing. So, Mr. Green.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Just a few months ago, when I started here on February 5th, one of the first meetings was a budget meeting. I remember looking out and seeing about 400 or 500 people in the auditorium. And we talked about moving forward, and we talked about collaboration, we talked about transparency, and continuing an excellent educational program here in Moorestown. And, but there was some, we were faced with some difficulties in that process. And in the first budget, that was, if you remember back in February, there was some things on the table for cuts that obviously the Board was concerned about moving forward in that direction. Thanks to many of you who were not here tonight, came up and talked about some of the wonderful programs and things that were on the block. And just reflecting a little bit before, I remembered how we talked about cutting powers out of the kindergarten program. I remember how we talked about cutting a guidance position at the high school, which many of you spoke towards. We talked about the challenge program, the elementary schools, and how that was able to be restored. We talked about music at UES. I remember many, many people coming up to the microphone and talking about the music program, and world languages across the Board from UES all the way up through the high school, instruction and technology at the middle school, and on and on. So, over the course of the next few meetings, I thanked the Board at this time for considering use of bank cap to restore those programs. And as I named those programs now, those things are all back in our budget, and we are very happy about that. This budget also contains a forward movement in technology, park and one-to-one, and the district has an outstanding technology plan that we need to move forward to. Smart boards in the classrooms, we're very excited about that. That will happen in September. And unfortunately, in these times, a few things had to be considered for cuts. The only real program, program that has not survived this proposed budget is the Family Consumer Science Program, which is a wonderful program, and unfortunately, at this point in time, has not made it to this budget. We're also forced to continue with our outsourcing. And we also, we'll go into next year without a science supervisor. We're gonna have to address that issue. And certainly, we had to do some trimming at the high school as far as sections and FTEs there, but there were no programs that have been lost other than the Family Consumer Science. So, in retrospect, and looking back on where we were back in February and where we are now, I feel very confident in this budget. I think we can continue to deliver our excellent educational program. We're able to restore some of our clubs and athletic programs to the potential use of pay-to-participate as revenue. So, at this point in time, I'm pleased that we're able to save many of the programs that we talked about in this auditorium over the course of the last two or three months. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Sugars for her presentation.
Good evening. I'm gonna start pretty much where Mr. Green did, talking about that first very public meeting that we had on February 12th. That was the night of Board's first budget retreat meeting. And at that point, we knew that we had some issues, some big issues to deal with. We knew at that point that the amount of fund balance that we had used in the previous year's budget was not going to be available in this year's budget. We had used $2.5 million fund balance in the 2013-14 budget. We knew we weren't gonna have that much available to use in the upcoming budget. We also knew that we had a 2% tax levy cap that was not gonna make up for that loss of fund balance. We knew that our salaries and benefits and other expenses were going up, and that we would have to take a hard look at all of those expenses to trim where we could in order to break some of those down, and that we had a large deficit between our revenues and expenditures that we had to address. So, a lot of our discussions, as we have gone through this process, and it has been a very inclusive process, a very lengthy process, involving all of our administrators and all of the Board in public. We had lots of discussions about the use of banked cap. And if you know, if you've been attending these meetings, you know that banked cap is not a pot of money, but it is spending tax authority, where we can expand our taxing authority in order to maintain some of our programs. We used $394,000 of that banked cap at the elementary schools at UES. We were able to maintain kindergarten powers in a part-time status, restore the challenge position at the elementary schools, and keep the music position and two world language positions at the UES through the use of banked cap. At WAMs and the high school, we also used banked cap again to maintain positions. We used $634,000 of banked cap there. We were able to maintain the industrial technology, science, world language, and math honors positions at the middle school, and guidance counselor, world language, and class size, some class size positions at the high school. Remaining banked cap will be used for professional development and for technology. Total banked cap that was used was $1,168,603. It restored 11.5 teaching positions, and the kindergarten and parent professional positions to part-time. Other things that we looked at through this process. Pay-to-play, that's new to the district this year. So, we have been taking a look at whether or not that's something that will work here. Revenue generation, the revenue generation committee is up and running full speed ahead. And we are taking a hard look at ways of generating revenue outside of our tax base. Additional state aid, we will be receiving two new categories of state aid this year. One is the per pupil growth aid. The other is park readiness aid, in which they gave us $10 per student to get ready for park. Also, we'll be appropriating extraordinary aid, which we generally do not do at budget time. It's an aid that comes later in the course of the year, but this year, we're gonna use $400,000 of our extraordinary aid in the budget. We're also maximizing use of fund balance as much as we feel that we're comfortable with. We don't have the $2.5 million available to us that we did the year before, but we'll be using just over $900,000 of fund balance. In terms of our expenditures, we took a hard look at our operational costs and made cuts there first. And as of now, we've been able to limit our personnel cuts on enrollment and class size issues, and as Mr. Green mentioned, the elimination of one program. If you recall, our timelines here, on March 18th, we approved our initial submission budget. That gets submitted to the county office. The county office then reviews that budget. On April 10th, we received approval on our budget and the use of banked cap. The county office also has to approve our use of banked cap and the items that we want to use to fund from the banked cap. So, we received that approval on April 10th. On April 14th, the administration made their final budget recommendation to the Budget Finance Committee, made a few changes. We adjusted our staffing for the extended day kindergarten program. I'm very happy to announce that we have 144 students enrolled in that program as of today. So, we maximized our tuition revenues in order to accommodate additional staffing needed for that program, and we lowered the pay-to-participate fees. So, tonight, the Board of Education approves specifically the amount of the general fund budget and the tax levy to support it. The budget, then, at that point, in terms of total dollar amount, is final after that approval process. There's no longer an election process that we go through. We can still make changes in terms of fluctuations among budget lines, and we have the ability to do that through the entire year, because oftentimes, what we're talking about in December and January and February and March, come September, sometimes things are very different, and we have to make adjustments. So, if we look at our initial budget, when we first started this process, that budget just for the general fund was just over $65 million. And the budget that we are presenting this evening is $62,868,576. We break that budget down into our very broad categories. We talk a lot about the general fund, because that's the part that we vote on technically, the tax levy to support that general fund. But we also have two other portions of our budget. One is the special revenue fund, and that's where we account for our state, federal, and local grants. And the debt service fund, and the debt service fund is the fund where we account for previously approved bond referendums. So, we're paying our bond principal and interest amounts out of that debt service fund. So, our instruction budget, we also break our general fund down into some very broad categories. Instruction is anything that can be attributable to a classroom, a grade level, a classification. So, your regular education salaries, your special education salaries, materials and supplies for those classrooms, your extracurricular and athletics, the costs come out of this section. And that total is $28,698,445. Your support services area of the budget is anything that's not directly attributable to a classroom or a classification. So, your nurse's office, your media centers, your transportation department, your business office, general administration, principals' offices, all of those kinds of things fall under support services. And that is gonna be $33,937,528. Capital is for any type of special project that you might do. It's not a major capital project that you might do, like in terms of a bond referendum, but smaller projects, maintenance-type projects that you would have, and any type of equipment purchases. And that's it, just over $200,000. And then, our special schools fund is where we account for our summer enrichment program. So, all in total, $62,868,576 in total for the general fund budget. Special revenue fund is where we account for our No Child Left Behind and our IDEA funds. And we budget a percentage of the amount that we received the year before. We're required by the state to budget a percentage of it, because at this point in our budgeting process, we don't know what those numbers will be. Generally speaking, we use our IDEA funding for out-of-district tuition, and our No Child Left Behind funding is usually used for special supplemental programs. And again, the debt service fund, which we talked about, payment of principal and bond interest for a total budget of $69,104,105. If we look at that a different way, in our general fund, we have three very broad categories that we can break things down into salaries, which is generally speaking, the largest portion of our budget, employee benefits, and also other. And other is anything else in the budget that is not a salary or a benefit. So, that could be utilities, that could be supplies for the classroom, that could be fuel for the buses, could be purchase services, professional development, technology, all kinds of things fall into that other category. If we look at the other side, when we're looking at our revenue side, we're using, as I mentioned, a little bit over $900,000 in budgeted fund balance. Our tax levy is at $56,318,599. It's up 4.2% from the previous year. That is the 2% that we are permitted to increase our budget by and the use of banked cap, the $1.1 million of banked cap that make up that increase. Tuition, regular ed and special ed, we're seeing a significant increase there. $1.6 million in what we take in between special education students that we have coming into the district, regular education students that we have coming into the district, and the extended day program. Pay-to-play parking right now is a $100,000 revenue figure that we have in the budget. And misleaves revenues, which are other things such as school rental fees, interest earnings, other misleaves type of revenues that we pick up along the way. We're lowering that number down to get this year to $330,000. That also includes a $50,000 revenue generation piece in there. Next category of our revenues is our state aid. We have two kinds of state aid, well, there's two kinds that you can get. One is equalization aid, and one is categorical aid. We don't receive equalization aid, we don't qualify for it. It's based on a district income and property tax value figure. We do, however, receive categorical aid. All districts receive categorical aid. And so, this year, we will be receiving special education aid, security aid, park readiness aid, as I mentioned before, $10 per student, and per pupil growth aid. Also, we are using extraordinary aid in the budget this year and our transportation aid. So, we can get just over $3.5 million from the state in terms of our aid. Medicaid reimbursement is a federal aid that we receive, and that makes up our revenue side of our general fund budget for next year. Special revenue, again, local, state grants. Most of our state funds are non-public funds. We're just sort of a flow-through for those funds. They go to some of the non-public schools in the area. Federal grant funds that we receive, again, No Child Left Behind and IDEA are the two largest ones that we receive. And then, debt service, tax levy supports our debt service budget, and state aid that we receive, we'll be receiving just about $465,000 in state aid to support that budget. We also have about almost $80,000 in fund balance in that fund this year. About two years ago, a year and a half ago, we refunded, refinanced some of our bonds, and that left us with some money left over, and we'll be using that money this year to offset some of those costs. Banked cap, as I mentioned, we are using a significant amount of banked cap. We accrued bank cap over the past three years, from the 2011-12 budget year through the 2013-14 budget year. We knew that if we didn't use that $695,000 from the 2011-12 school year, that we would lose it this year. So, we are using $695,000 from that year, $472,000 from the 2012-13 year, for a total of $1,168,603 for spending authority in banked cap. That will leave us with $1,368,115 that we can use in future budgets. We won't be generating any banked cap, obviously, this year. Tax impact, the average assessed home for the next year will be $445,300. The general fund tax levy in conjunction with the debt net service fund tax levy, we have a total of $60,931,900 in tax levy that is supporting this budget. That's a 2.2, almost 2.3 million dollar increase from the year before, or 3.9%. And the increase in taxes on the average assessed home is $141.
Questions from the Board?
I'll leave you free. So, Mrs. Sugars, a couple of questions. In terms of the budget, do we still anticipate the planned maximum increase in healthcare, the 16.75, is that still what we're budgeting?
We actually received our rate beginning of this week, and the amount is 16.41%, just under the 16.75.
Roughly the same, that's pretty much locked in at this point?
It is. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear Mr. Powell's question.
The question was, were we going to hit the maximum level for healthcare increases per the current contractor, that number was 16.75?
Thank you.
The reply was 16.41.
Thank you. Right now, we are going to stay with the program. The only change that I can see potentially would be to take a look at the state health benefit rates and see where they come in at. Unfortunately, the state health benefits plan, we want to count in here, we'll be around the fiscal year, and we won't know what those rates are until September, October, probably. If, in fact, they, if they don't increase more than 5.2%, that could potentially be a savings for us to switch back into that plan. It's just gonna come down to whether or not, what their consequences are. Unfortunately, we don't know that at this time.
Okay. A couple more. There's been some news recently about the state being potentially 800 million or so short in terms of their budget. Do we know if there's any possibility of maybe being cut to schools in order to try and reconcile that budget?
I have not heard anything about that.
I didn't know whether it was locked in at this point, in terms of commitments, or whether it could still change?
I believe we're probably locked in in terms of our categorical aid. The thing that I am concerned about, as we are using extraordinary aid in our budget next year, which we typically don't do, is the fact that our extraordinary aid application for this year has not come out yet and is not expected until May. So, that could be an area where there could be some changes made that could have an effect on us.
Thank you.
At our last meeting, we talked about pay-to. At our last meeting, we talked about
Much better.
pay-to-participate versus the use of additional bank cap. And there was gonna be some follow-up discussion by the Budget Finance Committee regarding that. So, I just wanted to get an update on what that discussion was. And it appears that there was no change, just what the thought process was. When we presented our budget to the Budget Finance Committee prior to that, that was after the April 8th meeting, we did not recommend any further changes. We had reduced some of the rates between initial submission and the April 8th meeting. We did not recommend any other changes at that point. My concern was that, given the amount of banked cap we were using at that point, to go back and ask for additional banked cap was probably not going to be well-received from the county office. And therefore, if, in fact, the $100,000 of pay-to-participate funds was something that the Board did not support and did not want to move ahead with it, it would make more sense to try to find cuts or to shift things around.
Because, well, maybe we should reconsider how much we're going to allow you to use or risk our ability to establish a precedent. And of course, if you're able to risk our, the possibility of using it again next year without very serious scrutiny. We know that it's likely that we're gonna be in that realm of getting extra. That wasn't a discussion with the Finance Committee at this point, of course, the elements of.
I'll wait until.
Okay.
Come later, that's fine.
Okay. So, then, all of the forward to public comment. Raise your hand, and please come to the microphone. Be aware that we're not at liberty to discuss personnel issues. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. I can't, I'm sorry, I have my glasses taken.
Can't see the ear?
Yes, sir.
My name is Rabstu Betpaiman. My address?
Yes.
646 North Tarikoga Drive, Moorestown. I'm here to talk behalf of our high school students and how we feel. It is the Board of Education's main job, main priority, to keep our education establishments as high and excelling as possible. And by cutting math and English teachers, you're just crippling the system. Math and English are the two most heavily tested subjects, the SATs, ACTs, the new PAR test, I think it is. And by cutting math and English teachers, you're just inevitably gonna lower our scores. I've been a math honors and AP student all high school. Younger than that, I've been excelled all the time. And it's only because I have great teachers teaching me everything. Like, I know what a Taylor polynomial is. I bet no one else even knows. And the past four years, I've had the best teachers of my life, especially the past two years. And with the current budget, you're gonna cut the man who I respect most in the school. He is probably my mentor and a very good friend. I plan to keep in touch with him for the rest of my life, because he's had a huge impact on me and most of our students. And not just him, but all the math teachers have molded us into probably some of the best Americans in the country. I get to be a Purdue engineer next year. My friends are going to Yale, Columbia, Cornell, MIT, Princeton. This girl got accepted to Stanford and five other IVs, all because of our great teachers. And with the budget now, teachers will be gone, class sizes will increase, no more personal time 12th period, because there are too many students coming in to talk to their teachers. And it's just bad for upcoming students, like my sister. I want her to have the same education I did, and with less teachers, that's not possible. There's no time for intimate one-on-one time to actually learn the topics. With the cuts, it's just crippling our whole education system. Thank you.
Hi, Nancy Matthews, 44 East Central Avenue in Moorestown. I tried to resolve this question by email today, and Mr. Seibel was kind enough to interact with me back and forth a couple of times. But I'd like to echo the concern. But I'd like to echo the concern about the cuts in the basic faculty at the high school, the English, the math, the science, and the social studies. And a couple of meetings ago, I asked for class size, average class size information. And I wasn't in town for the April eighth meeting. And I have the notes from that meeting, which was very helpful. And the presentation on April eighth presented data on the assumptions about the number of students in this year and next year at the different levels, how many teachers there will be, or FTEs, and then what the average class size is going to be as a result. And my concern is that data looks very rosy, but I think the data, I don't understand how the data cannot be flawed. We're talking about a high school where the enrollment is not changing. The enrollment in grades nine and ten next year is going to be exactly the same as it is this year. And I think there's a difference of seven students in grades eleven and twelve. So, basically, we got the same number of students. But when I look at this data from the April eighth meeting, one thing it's showing is that in, somebody's assumption for the total number of students for levels four and five, which is juniors and seniors, honors and AP. So, I'm assuming that is juniors and seniors plus honors and AP across all four years, but I'm not sure. But that number for English is going down by a hundred and thirty-three students next year. That number for math is going down by a hundred and forty students. That number for science is going down by two hundred and thirty-three students. Meanwhile, the level twos at college prep and the level threes at college prep, those numbers are all going up, which indicates to me that we're making some assumption that we're going to shift some students from perhaps a ninth grade honors class or a tenth grade honors class into a regular college prep class. I don't know how else these numbers make any sense. But assuming that these numbers are what's used to derive the average class size, which looks really rosy. The English average class size for level four or five honors AP is going to go down next year. This year, it's twenty-two point seven, it's going to go down to nineteen point two. Math is going to go from nineteen point one down to fourteen point seven. And science is twenty-two, it's going to be about the same next year. And social studies is going to be about the same. So, these numbers look rosy, but it doesn't make sense when you look at the enrollment numbers. And I'm very concerned that there might be a mistake somewhere. And it doesn't make sense how we can be eliminating FTEs, showing changes in enrollment numbers when there is not a change in the enrollment at the high school. The only thing that makes sense to me, which Mr. Seibel explained, which I think is a great idea, is that if there are some electives within, so I think, for example, and he did not give me this example, so I'm making it up. But in the English, in junior and senior year, the college prep students have the opportunity to take a lot of different, kind of smaller seminars. And if some of those have lower enrollment and are being eliminated, I can understand that that's something, you know, it's a luxury that we have to do away with. But that's not being made clear from these numbers. And I think there, you know, we really need to look more carefully. I don't understand how we can cut all of these teachers in science, math, English, and social studies and not be increasing our class sizes or reducing the availability of the honors classes at all four grade levels. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Unfortunately, the last time we met, as part of that presentation, Mr. Seibel indicated that we were still registering students. This was a work in progress. The board has been presented with our, basically, our up-to-date figures as of today. And I can understand how, if you had the April eighth figures, how this probably wouldn't make sense. So, for the benefit of the community and board, I would just like to give you the updated figures. For example, in English, where the total students in honors four or five is now three hundred and five with an average class size of twenty-one point eight. The math figure that we had at two eighty is now three hundred and sixty-nine as far as level four or five math honors. The numbers as far as science, level four or five, the number you had for, on April eighth was five sixty-nine, is now six fifty-seven for a total with a class size of twenty-two point seven. Also, the level four or five honors in social studies went from three seventy-three to four twenty-two. So, I want to be very clear as to the process here. Students were still registering, they were still running their schedules. And at this point, these are updated as of four o'clock this afternoon. So, I urge the board to consider that. And Ms. Matthews, again, we apologize for having the April eighth numbers, but these have now been updated.
Can you just clarify, is the level four or five honors AP, is that all juniors and seniors because some of them are in level four and five and some of them are in honors AP? Or does that line include honors and AP students who may be freshmen, sophomores?
A great question for the master scheduler over here.
It's all four grade levels.
The honors and AP includes any honors student?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that question? How far along are we in the enrollment process at the high school?
The initial course selection is done. We're in the waiver process now, finishing up waiver process this week. And students still have the opportunity to adjust their requests through this week. So, given this week would be more solid, but this is much closer than previous.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Dr. Lamai from...
My name is Dr. Lamai.
Please come to the microphone.
My name is Dr. Lamai, and I teach math at the high school. This is my twentieth year. I want to follow up very quickly with what the superintendent just mentioned with the class size enrollment. You mentioned the updated numbers. The average class size for math in the AP and the honors, you didn't mention that. It was listed on the April eighth as the fourteen point seven, which I believe is greatly incorrect.
It's nineteen point four.
Now, we're at nineteen point four. So, when the decision was made to cut a math teacher, the propaganda in front of us looks as though this class size is going down a lot. But instead, our class size is nineteen point four.
Right. Well, I remind you that this year, in level four or five honors, math was nineteen point one.
Right, right, right. But originally in the April...
Correct.
It's a fourteen. I wanted to make that correction.
It's a work in progress as far as the propaganda on that social...
And the class size for the social studies?
Yes.
What was that, the average class size?
Level four or five honors?
Yes, yes.
Twenty-three point four.
Okay, and the original was twenty?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
So, where we are is that math next year is going to have fifty fewer students in this level four or five honors and AP. Fifty fewer than we have this year in a high school where the enrollment is not changing. So, what that means is somewhere along the way, probably two sections of honors, probably not AP math, but somewhere along the way, maybe it's in honors geometry, maybe it's in honors Algebra II, I don't know. But it must be getting cut because, unless we're assuming the kids are stupider next year, which I don't think that's true. So, somewhere along the way, we are eliminating the ability for fifty students to take the highest level of math. We are eliminating, well, we're going to test my math skills here. Five thirty-five, a hundred and thirty-five students are going to lose the ability to take the highest level of science across all four grades. And then there's an increase in the number of social studies opportunities.
Just a moment, let's see, you can come up with it. Let's see if there's a resolution to Ms. Matthews' most recent question.
To increase class size, we're offering the same courses with more students.
I'm sorry to be argumentative, but that would be reflected in the average class size. That would not be reflected in the number of students, in the enrollment in these classes. And that's my concern. My concern is that we are cutting a teacher and therefore, we can't offer as many sections of each class. So, not only are class sizes increasing, but these numbers are indicating that fewer students are going to have the opportunity by a huge factor. We're not talking about a matter of five or ten students.
Drew, I have a question to you because it might help. The numbers that we're looking at, the ones that were given to us from four twenty-nine today, they're reflective of the enrollment as of today and the numbers of students that signed up as of today? What's the percentage of students that signed up as of today for their classes? So, this is not reflective based upon some estimation of where the students have signed up for next year? This is based upon what the students have signed up for next year? So, this is not a, this is, we're out of projection, which we're back in April ninth. We are actually at reality for next year. I'm asking, okay, so we're at actual.
Okay, so then these numbers indicate there is less demand for the math, the higher level math classes, the higher level English and the higher level science.
That's correct.
Yes, I want to follow up. A quick thing about the math numbers. There's one class, yeah, I had a question. But one of the math classes, multi-variable calculus, only has four to six students a year, which means the average class size is brought down by that number. So, if you add in that number, the number has to exceed, the average class size has to exceed over twenty students, which is a lot more than this year.
Thank you.
See, real question about, are we going to be allowed to comment? Are we going to be allowed to public comment after, or is this the only time to public comment?
It's a public hearing. This is a public hearing, it's different than comment.
Yeah, there's public comment and there's public hearing comment. So, yes, you'll get another shot. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Green. I live at one twenty-five School East Street. We have successfully raised three children that have come through the Moorestown School District and are well-equipped as adults to lead productive lives as citizens and family members. It has also been my privilege to work in the Moorestown Township Public Schools at the middle school level at two different length these stints of my professional career. I was fortunate to open the coeducational Family and Consumer Science Program at the middle school beginning in nineteen seventy-one. And I am very gratified to have spent my last ten years back at the Moorestown Middle School working with many of you as students and many of your children as students. And of course, with the faculty members that are part of the WHAMs community. I was not going to speak publicly because, to me, the issue of being the only curriculum that is being cut in its entirety in this exemplary school district is the one, Family and Consumer Science, to which I have devoted my entire professional career by choice, is extremely disturbing to me. To me, the issue is not the person running the program. That is why I did not speak at prior meetings because I didn't feel it was necessary to associate the professional involved with the program, the emphasis needed to be on the program. However, it is extremely disturbing to me that the student that spoke recently is rightfully proud, as we all should be, of the students from our school district that are going on to extremely successful potential lives and careers. I feel that the Family and Consumer Science Program, both at the middle school and at the high school, has met the needs of a total student body, not all students that can be highlighted in local newspapers and involved in other areas that are bringing much credit to the school district. But it has certainly been a curriculum that has met the needs of many students of a diverse population, of which, at least in my career, I am seeing more and more of in Moorestown. I remain extremely disappointed, and I take this as a personal lack in myself, that the groups that I thought would come most to the defense of Family and Consumer Science in Moorestown School District have not spoken up to the degree that would warrant your consideration of a change of what I consider to be a very unfortunate decision. I am not, I did not prepare comments, so I apologize for the extemporaneous nature of my speaking and also my emotion. But I would like to say that, in conclusion, I feel the Family and Consumer Science curriculum has been of great benefit to a number of students in past years and would continue to be so in future years. And has an important part in the Moorestown Township culture in terms of the contributions that it makes to a total school environment. In conclusion, I would just like to say that I am at the top of the salary scale and you will not need to worry about that much longer. But we are a family that shares a car. And virtually every afternoon, when I get in the car with my husband to pick me up to go home, he'll say, "How did your day go?" And more days than not, I will look at him and smile and say, "You know what? I think they got their money's worth out of me today." So, I would just like to say I'm disturbed with this decision. I am here basically as a last-ditch effort to at least say that my professional career was not a choice of error, but I think it was a very key investment in the future of the students that I had the privilege to deal with.
Donna, I'm going to say now instead of probably later when maybe more appropriate, before we vote, but either way, I'll get my thoughts out at this point. And I have a little bit of a prepared statement, if you don't mind me repeating it. I just want to say that I've never been more frustrated about the educational process. Everybody will compromise. And every compromise that we make, that's somebody. But here, we are increasing taxes in this proposed budget. We're adding additional fees to implement a budget. Our costs are increasing within this budget. We're going into bank cap in this budget. Yet our costs are increasing much faster than our revenues. There's no way around that. And we have a two percent levy cap. How somebody can be asked to adequately educate the students to a free and appropriate public education in this environment is beyond me. And I'm supposed to be doing it for the benefit of the students. And for why, we all moved to this town, for the school districts. There's not a single person that came up to this microphone that said they moved here for any other reason. We all came here because education... We all came here because education on healthcare costs this coming year is six point five percent, that's the average. Now, obviously you just heard our healthcare costs are going up sixteen point four one percent. We thought that was a good hedge, obviously it may not have been, but that's the average. And they've said that high deductible plans are becoming the mainstay, I think most of us understand that, but that's not the only answer here, and this cannot become an us versus them, a taxpayer versus our staff's mentality again, which is what we've had in the past. It needs to be a group effort to make education the number one priority. It can't be anything more than a number one priority. Now, we have a little bit more than fifty percent of our bank cap available if this budget's approved for next year, and I would ask the board next year to seriously consider using all of that bank cap next year. And we're implementing pay-to-participate, not that anyone at this point I think wants to do that, but if this budget is passed, it will be, become part of reality. And we're asking everybody to pitch in a little bit more, and I will support this budget personally, because it's supporting as much of the educational system as we can continue to support going forward. But it's not perfect, I'm not happy with it, but I have to understand, and I hope the rest of the board understands, that this budget, if it does not get passed tonight, will end up being more of a problem than it is in its current form. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, Abe, and the emotion which they were put forward, because I agree with you, Mrs. Grigis, the problem, the people that are here to support the math teacher or the science teacher, why, that's not the problem, there are systemic problems, and it's a balanced equation. Everywhere we turn, they say, geez, what can I do, what, what can we do to save this little piece over here? There's an equally disturbing piece over there that balances that, and, um, we also have to be mindful in the future. And I think that, I know that gentleman said, uh, we have a certain responsibility. Unfortunately, we have lots of responsibilities to lots of different constituents, and, um, we haven't heard much from the general public in paying their taxes and aren't taking advantage of our services, but you would have to say that a four percent tax increase is, you know, pretty pushing the limit for just about any, any other bodies such as us. And we push that limit, and we are still where we are, so, um, other comments from board members, I'm happy to...
Mr. Michler, um, if by chance, actually this is from Ms. Schippers, if by chance there is any unforeseen savings that might come in any other area of this budget in the near future, um, is there the possibility of reallocating to staff positions?
There certainly could be, Mrs. Zajak, um, and as I mentioned when I was doing my budget presentation, a lot of times the discussions that we have in December and January and February, and when we get to September, we're looking at a different scenario. We got those couple of extra kids in second grade we weren't planning on, things like that, so, things change, um, we try to monitor that and guesstimate as close as we can during the budgeting process. Certainly, um, if we get additional retirements, if we come across some type of savings that we weren't counting on or weren't planning on, we could certainly take a look at that. I do try to reserve some of those funds for those types of situations where we need the additional special education teacher, we need the additional regular education teacher due enrollment, um, those scenarios generally come first. But if, if in fact we found additional retirements that we hadn't planned on, or some other area of savings that we hadn't counted on at this time, we could certainly take a look at that and see what we could do with staff.
Thank you, I understand that, and Mrs. Matthews has certainly drilled into the numbers, I understand from the information that we reviewed that we will have, uh, we won't have excessive class size, and taking into consideration that smaller classes, it's all factored in here, but certainly, as has been mentioned by parent and student, obviously if we can reduce those class sizes and, um, and we have the ability to do so, that would certainly be beneficial for all, I believe. And then my last point is, that these, as Mr. Weinstein has, has mentioned in his comments, this, the hardest part of, I think, being a school board member is this day, where you're, where I as a board member am making a decision that impacts staff and student and ultimately families, um, and we have such a wonderful and dedicated staff, and certainly, um, I appreciate all of the service and this, as well as our custodial staff, and these are very difficult decisions to make.
With that then, I will ask, actually, Mrs. Schippers, would you like me to read this motion? There are, you know, this one, it has two words, travel-related expense reimbursement, and then the, uh, well, this, this whole thing goes through the general fund, special education, etc.
You can read it if you like, I can read it if you would like, Mr. Michler, I think if you started with, you have further resolved most of the first part of the mission relates to, um, travel expenses?
Okay. Uh, and travel unrelated expense reimbursement issues with respect to the budget are discussed or approved at this time by state regulation, that used to be the case, but it has been for the last few years.
Right, and the state considers professional development, they use the travel cost, so it's dedicated.
Okay, professional. So be it further resolved, the Board of Education approves travel and related expense reimbursements in accordance with NGAC six A, twenty-three B, dash one point two B, to a maximum expenditure of eighty-six thousand, eighty-eight dollars for all staff and board members, and, uh, also be resolved that the final budget be approved for the twenty-fourteen, fifteen school year, using the twenty-fourteen, fifteen state aid figures and the Secretary to the Board of Education be authorized to submit the following final budget to the Executive County Superintendent of Schools, and then it lists the, uh, the various funds that are involved in this. Be it further resolved that the proposed base budget exceeds the state's adequacy budget. So to add such a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
If I may, I know my fellow board members are probably sick of hearing me right now about this point, but for good conscience, I'd like to share again. First off, I'd like to thank the administration, I know I was very concerned when we initially were faced with, I guess what we were presented a few months ago, which we kind of knew was coming, uh, but we ultimately had to deal with it. I know I'm still highly concerned with the amount we're putting in technology, I'm very for technology investments, as I've said before. Granted, this can be a lease purchase, so it will be spread over time, but I find it troubling that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be put into smart boards, I think that's important, but that can be spread over maybe a couple of years, so maybe we do half next year, half the year after, maybe possibly the same concept with the teachers' laptops, it gives more money to put back into our essential programs than our curriculum.
Okay, anyone else? I think it's appropriate that we call it roll, right?
Mr. Panzarella?
No.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Pugh?
No.
Mrs. Sawen?
Yes.
Mr. Simeon?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zajak?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldenberg?
Yes, with a heavy heart?
Mr. Michler?
Yes. Not that I don't have a heavy heart, sure, and I, I think we all do, so. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing on the two thousand fourteen, fifteen budget?
So moved.
Second.
And, um, we now have some, uh, we have the, uh, the attendant reduction in force motion, uh, and I believe there's a, uh, there's a schedule, Schedule A attached to that, um, could I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Why don't you call it all, take your questions.
Mr. Panzarella?
No.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Pugh?
No.
Mrs. Sawen?
Yes.
Mr. Simeon?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zajak?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldenberg? Yes, Mr. Michler?
Yes. And, um, we have a number of employee relations items and, uh, that we will need an executive session to discuss, it probably won't be more than perhaps twenty minutes, and, uh, but why don't we, why don't we skip and talk about this donation that we need to approve, and then we'll, uh, we'll go in the executive session, um, if you want to have a public comment now, that's fine, but we're going to go out for about twenty minutes and come back, so if you'd like to make a comment.
Cricket Dever, three-ten North Stanwick Road. Mr. Michler, I've been to all the meetings that we've had on the budget, and I've heard many, many, many taxpayers come up here and say that they want you to go to two percent and take banked cap. I also am a taxpayer, I do not own a four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar home, but I would be glad to pay a hundred and forty-one dollars extra a year, no doubt about it, support the children of my town, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am.
I, I just want to reiterate, I think you're remiss on in not saying that the taxpayers have to have a four percent tax increase when over the past three years, when taxing-
You're absolutely correct. When you average it out, you're absolutely correct, it hasn't been four percent.
Exactly, over three years.
They have short numbers, I believe.
But you shouldn't.
Well, I, I don't, I'm happy to pay the hundred and forty-one dollars, and I have to pay-
But that, but, but that's not what you stated, you said a four percent tax increase is what you mentioned, is being something that they had, that they are, that they are being to, you know, forced to do the one hundred and forty-one dollars without mentioning publicly that for three years, it was well under what any municipality had to deal with, that's my point. And to you, Mr. Weinstein, um, a possible solution to all those issues, issues which I have been saying, which I will be the first one to volunteer to be on a committee, chair of committee, just like they did in Massachusetts, when there was a cap placed on the state, it lasted for about four years, I know people who graduated who went to school under that, and it got so bad that they couldn't even pay for state championships, they couldn't do anything, so parents actually, and school boards organized and actually formed groups who petitioned, and yes, paid for lobbying, because we can all, those who have money to throw around to pay for lobbying can do that when it's something for their interest. So if school boards and towns were interested in changing the system, they would do that. I'm certainly interested, and I know a lot of people who would help with that, so if there's anybody in Moorestown who's interested in signing petitions and getting groups together to go and say, "This is ridiculous, you cannot fund schools on this," period, beginning and end of story, and it's only a matter of time. Our situation was different and unique for a lot of reasons, but the problem will eventually come, and it's one that has been imposed on us by legislators who have no idea what's going on, and who quite frankly, most of them send their kids to private school. So it is incumbent upon communities to stand up for what they deserve, not necessarily sit back and say, "We have this, 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 and this to deal with," and I'm more than willing, as I serve on the revenue generation committee, as Cricket does, as other people do, to stand up, so that's where, as far as I'm concerned, the boards of education in the state need to get involved, need to start letter-writing campaigns, need to start saying, "This is not feasible," not because of salaries and benefits, because unless you plan, you in general, the state plans on teaching children, um, through, I don't know, carpet and utilities, uh, that's not going to happen.
I just want to say, sure, I understand, and I do, and that's what I'm saying, it's not just salaries and benefits, it's the whole package, it doesn't even matter, just take salaries and benefits up, off the table, two percent isn't even enough to cover our other leasing costs.
Exactly.
So I agree, it, it's, that's not the only problem, I hope I didn't say that earlier that it was, it's not. And I agree too that it's incumbent upon everybody in this room, maybe the five hundred that were here the first day, to really consider what you're saying as being the right answer, which is to tell the government that this is not how we want our schools to be funded.
And if I may, I, I don't think you're, certainly you're not alone, I know there's a, an effort at the state level, I think there are up to a few dozen school board members now to try to pressure the governor and their state legislators to repeal the two percent cap, so.
Okay, now, two dozen school members out of six-
I completely agree.
Districts in the state, Brandon, please give me your name.
Sure.
Because, but my point is, the people who are there going to listen to are the school boards.
I agree.
This, um, this actually came up at, um, speak meeting, um, at the last speak meeting as well, uh, not specific to the two percent cap, but that, uh, and I believe at our last meeting, somebody from the audience also spoke to this, um, when you look at the actual state funding that Moorestown receives, and Mrs. Goldenberg has been, um, with Garden State Coalition, certainly working on this effort, but that's done through New Jersey school boards, through Garden State Coalition, and here we are as a town, a Moorestown, um, and it's incumbent upon us as residents as well, not just the school board, not just our employees, but our town to figure out, um, how we should be, you know, to, I guess, help support the schools in, other than with your dollars, but also with your voice, and, you know, I, it's, um, uh, there was just a, a member of speak that was speaking to this, but certainly it's been echoed throughout town here and there, and I, so it's not, uh, I guess it's not the school board's issue tonight, but it certainly is something that we need to be, um, as a community pursuing, and that's our overall funding just through, not just the school, not just funding for schools, but funding for the municipalities as well.
Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am, and then? Okay, you, you're, you can be next, no, no, go ahead, Mrs. Matthews, she's just going to be next.
At the high school, it's four and a half teachers that you're cutting, but those teachers, I, I understand you just passed a motion, cutting the positions, once those teachers are gone, we can't get them back. These are the teachers that are teaching some of the most important classes in that high school, that, that's my understanding from what my child has told me, these teachers are teaching the highest level classes, once those teachers walk out the door, we don't have them anymore, and, you know, so even if we can restore these positions next fall because, um, finances change, we're going to get the bottom of the barrel teaching our most important classes, so, you know, if there's any way that we can reconsider these, but, the FTE cuts, at least on a temporary basis.
Thank you, yes, ma'am? I said I had to bring my glasses.
Um, good evening, I'm running for DTE cuts, one twenty-three South Park, Laupin, Moorestown, New Jersey. I have a couple of questions under operations, maintenance, grounds, and security. Uh, I see a decrease of two hundred thousand dollars, I'm assuming that's because of the night custodians we're cutting.
Right.
And how many of them are we cutting? Ten. Okay, and then I see a couple lines down that our contracted services are going to increase by a hundred and fifteen grand, so is it fair to assume that the ten we're cutting because we're contracting out, or it's going to cost us a hundred and fourteen grand?
That would be, um, increases in cost of other contract services as well?
In others as well, and then it looks like our utilities are going to go up a hundred and seventy-five grand next year.
We're, uh, coming to the end of our current contract with our provider, so we wanted to build some cushion in there.
to build some cushion in that in the event that our rates go up, and also, if we have another winter like this one, we could have, see increase in cost in that area as well.
Okay. And then insurance is dropping significantly. Can you explain that?
Yes, we're using some reserve funds to pay for our insurance next year.
So, it's not that our insurance is going from costing us 135 grand to 15 grand, it's that we're using money from somewhere else to help offset that?
Correct.
Okay. Did, is there anywhere on this budget where for, first of all, all the mold costs in remediation from South Valley, UBS, and Roberts, where is that listed from our 13-14 budget, all the costs?
It would be listed throughout the budget. Some of it would be in the maintenance budget, some of it would be in school supply budgets, and some of it, as we're getting refunded from the insurance company, we're refunding some of those funds to this budget line.
Well, then, why would it be in the budget? Because the budget was prepared before we had the mold problem.
In the 13-14 budget, we would have had to move funds around in order to accommodate those costs, so it wouldn't be in the 14-15 budget, it would be in the 13-14 budget.
Okay, so, since you did say we're still waiting for reimbursement, Ms. Matthews, which has done an amazing job tonight of holding on to tasks when it comes to some of our data, so if we get reimbursed for all of what's been put out and sprinkled throughout the budget, so it's really hard to figure out how much it's actually cost us, I say us not, because a third of our staff do pay taxes here. When we figure out what it costs us, if we got fully reimbursed from the insurance companies, how many staff members could that reinstate? I don't know the exact number of what it's cost us between the dehumidifiers, replacing things, et cetera, the whole remediation, air conditioning, testing.
Well, we didn't cut staff members to pay for the costs.
No, but I mean, we're not, we've already put the money out for all the mold.
Correct.
So, if it comes back in, couldn't we then reinstate some positions?
Well, you're talking about two different budget years, first of all. And secondly, we, you know, stole money from other lines in order to accommodate.
So, can we steal money since we didn't manage our buildings properly, and that's why we had mold? Couldn't we steal the money so that we can educate our students?
We managed our buildings fine. That's not what resulted in the mold, but we.
Well, we can pull school dues land, as we've talked about heavily, and I don't try to move forward as requested.
We, you're talking about two different budget years, so other than, you know, we're going to be reimbursed probably for all but maybe $50,000 of the costs.
So, how much reimbursement are we paying?
We're probably talking about a little over $200,000.
$200,000. So, the same amount it's cost us to just cut 10 of our custodial staff is what we're going to get back. Okay. So, a couple more questions on that. Science supervisor salary, I see a reduction in administration of $90,000. Is that fair to assume that's what the science supervisor salary was?
The science supervisor salary would be in a different section of the budget. It would be in.
I'm looking under general administration.
Yeah, it's not under general administration. The school administration would be your principal offices. Supervisors would be in improvement instructional services budget line.
Okay, well, what page?
That would be on the.
Improvement of instructional services. Okay, $88,000. And do we know how many science supervisors are K-12? Do we know offhand how many staff members they then supervise?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. But as the science supervisor position is a curricular position, it has a direct impact on students and teachers. We're obviously part of a STEM initiative, which the S stands for science. Okay, so, offhand, I know we made a big cut to buildings and grounds a couple of years ago, we're now cutting 10 custodial staff members, so we do have a buildings and grounds supervisor position. Where is that listed? Under what line item?
Buildings and grounds supervisor would be in the custodial salaries line.
Custodial salaries?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so we don't know a number of our science and supervisors, do we know, like, how many our language arts supervisors, our math supervisors, about how many teachers and students they have a direct interaction with?
60 staff members about, and they're K-12, so you had.
All those students that get taught.
All the students at the elementary level, plus once you get to UBS sixth grade on up, you know.
Department. Okay. So, you'd say at the elementary level, we're looking at about 1,000 students, and then departmentalize up. I'll just say 1,500 students, 60 staff members. So, the building and ground supervisor at one time supervised the buildings and grounds staff, and now have been cut. They were cut a couple of years ago, and now we just cut 10 more. So, the buildings and grounds supervisor, who's probably supervising, I'm going to guess me, 10 or less, who's not related to teachers or staff or curricular, we're keeping this supervisory position, which I'm going to look under improvement of instructional services. That costs 80,000, and I'll be kind and say that that's what our buildings and grounds supervisor is getting paid, yet now supervising at least 50% less than what that individual was supervising five years ago. Now, I could really elaborate and, like, explain what I'm trying to say without saying it, but I think that we had to have a justification, and let me make it clear, I'm not advocating for one administrator over the other. What I'm saying is, if you're going to make these heavy-hearted, difficult decisions to cut, whether custodial positions, whether supervisor positions, whether teaching positions, that all have a direct impact on the students in our classrooms and the colleagues that I work with, we need to make decisions that are educationally sound. So, if we're choosing to keep the buildings and grounds supervisor that supervises potentially 15 less, I'm assuming, I don't know the exact numbers, then that person did, then why aren't we looking at sharing services if we've done in other departments land? Or why are we not looking at eliminating that position and letting that head custodian be supervised by the principals, which is a quite efficient manner, to save money? And then we could re-stake two teaching positions. So, where I have a hard time with it is, we cut science, which is directly related to instruction, but we're keeping this position that does not have an impact on students and teachers. So, I think it can be quite misleading for myself, who doesn't understand budgets, or anyone else that we're lucky enough to have in the audience tonight, where we're saying we are cutting here, but people may not realize that these 10 students that just got cut have a supervisor, and that supervisor's salary is not being adjusted at all accordingly. We're now paying this person 10,000 to 12,000 per staff member that they supervise. And we don't have the families in consumer science. We're going to have class sizes 25-plus. It just doesn't make sense.
All right, we're going to move on and go into executive session. First, we have this motion to accept the donation in exchange for a sponsorship of the technology hallway at the high school from Lincoln Tech. And can I have such a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions? I have one. Is this a monthly annual payment?
This is for the three years.
So, it's not an annual. Any other questions? All favor?
Aye.
Those, president's side. And can I have a, I'll have a motion to go into executive session. Be it resolved by the Board of Education, Moorestown Township, necessary to meet executive session, discuss matters involving personnel issues, including the number of employment appointments, termination of employment, terms and conditions of employment evaluation, performance, promotion, or discipline of any public officer or employee, specifically personnel, matters involving quasi-judicial deliberations, and specifically, student matters. And Art, does that cover?
It does.
The matters, yeah, okay. So, can I have such a motion?
So moved.
All favor? Those? Okay, we are going into executive session. We will return, and there'll be an action item with respect to the personnel agenda items. Those, president's side. Okay, so, we have. We have one personnel item, and we have a student matter, two student matters, I'm sorry. And are there any suspensions or anything else that we didn't talk about? HIV report, okay. So, there's just the personnel item and the student. We can vote on this separately, and we'll call the roll. Can I have a motion to approve the recommendation with respect to the professional staff?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Panzarella?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Simeon?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein? Mrs. Zajak?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Michler?
Yes. And Art, do we need to vote on the two student matters separately, or vote on them together?
You can vote on them together.
Okay. With respect to the two student matters, can I have a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Second.
And can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Panzarella?
Yes.
Mr. Pugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Sawen?
Yes.
Mr. Simeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Zajak?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Michler?
Yes. And Art, do we need to vote on the two student matters separately, or vote on them together?
You can vote on them together.
Okay. With respect to the two student matters, can I have a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Second.
And can you call the roll, please?